All right. All right. Thank you, Sam. All right. Welcome back from lunch. We're going to move on to our 6.8, our one o'clock item, consideration of letters to A, the United States Board on Geographic Names, Domestic Names Committee, and B, the California Advisory Committee on Geographic Names, recommending changes to BGN's principles, policies, and practices in light of the January 20th, 2025 Presidential Executive Order restoring names that honor American greatness. And Supervisor Pyska, you want to start out?
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, this last year has been really difficult for everyone regarding this name change. And the executive order of President Trump to update the policies and procedures gives us the opportunity to share where we found those policies fell short over the last year specifically around renaming populated places. It's much different to rename a town than it is a mountain or creek. And so that's what's in these letters. And these are the issues that I've been pushing all year with both committees. And so I think it's important for us as a board to lean on our experience and push this forward, advocate for what we've been through for these changes.
All right. So we'll go ahead and go straight to public input. And if you would like to come up and speak on this item, please come up, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I just got a clarification since I know a lot of people have been involved in asking for this to come back. But I specifically came to the board beginning of January asking for the item 611 that was heard on December 10th to come back to the new board, to the board with the new board members so they could weigh in on that. And I had assumed all the time that that was going to happen in this meeting. And it's obviously not happened. And you and I had spoken about that a couple of times, that it was on, it was agendized with that in mind. But that's clearly not the case. And so I'm asking if that's going to be put back on so that we can discuss it.
All right. I'll defer to County Council.
Okay. I'm just going to wait up here because I may have a question of him if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item in particular specifically just refers to the two recommendations, each corresponding to the letter that's proposed letter to be sent to the BGN. The other item will be the one to be sent to Kagan. Generally, your board cannot add any items or actions beyond this item to be discussed in the agenda. So in terms of proposing new items, that's not before your board today, that goes through the normal standard procedure of consideration review, having a sponsor to be proposed to the board. That goes through staff review. That goes through the agendizing requirements. But the item itself is limited to just under A, the letter to BGN, proposed letter to the BGN, and B, the proposed letter to Kagan.
So just for clarity on that, and I knew that, I agree with you on that. But I figured I would take the opportunity just to say, you know, reiterate one more time. This item was intended for my request, that's what my intention was anyway. And I think there's a lot of people here that who intended to speak and address on that on both sides. And it appears as an end run to get away from having that tough discussion by not everybody on the board, but at least some. And so I guess we'll try it again to have that on there. There's at least one person in this room who was told that it hasn't, wasn't going to be put on because of something to do with Robert's Rules of Orders, which is absurd since Robert's Rules of Order is just a guideline. It has nothing to do with the law that runs, the public meeting law that you are bound by. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I guess we'll make another request through another supervisor that will bring it to the chair at that time. And thank you.
And I just, real quick, Rob, I just wanted to let you know, I know we did discuss this. You brought it to us, I want to say, in the second meeting of January. And during that, I deferred to the district supervisor.
Correct.
And I usually do. So I know you requested it.
You and I had a very good discussion about it. I think you were doing your job as chair. And I appreciate that. I don't have any, I don't apply any fault to the way you handled it. I appreciate the way you did your job.
I see some pens up. Real quick, did you?
Does he want to speak? Or, yeah, I did. But if you want to leave it open for public speaking, I can wait.
Okay, okay.
May I speak?
Yes.
Not using about three minutes just to what was raised, as opposed to general public comment.
Public input? Or are you, what are you speaking of?
I'd like to speak about how the board might bring a reconsideration back if you'd be interested. Otherwise, I can skip it.
You want to, should we?
Well, this is still part of the public comment where each speaker can have three minutes. So your board can.
Okay, then I'll hold on that one and use my three minutes elsewhere. Thank you.
All right. Did you want to go ahead, Helen?
Yeah, I was wondering, and this is actually a question for you, Mr. Lloyd. I know that there's been a lot of uncomfort and disagreement with the name change. In particularly, they didn't like the name Canockdye. There was no input from the community in any way, shape, or form. And since I'm new to this, can I put a resolution forward to revisit the name of Kelseyville? It's not the same. Can I bring something forward onto the agenda? Revisit the naming of Kelseyville?
If.
For public input.
Thank you, Supervisor Owen. So if, in effect, that proposed recommendation or item will result in the reconsideration of your boards, of the boards' December 10, 2024 action under the rules of procedure, general protocol, and committee's policy of the County of Lake, in particular, Chapter 1, Section 3, Rule 9, that time has passed. The deadline to submit or propose a reconsideration of the board's action that took place on December 10 would have been the next regularly scheduled board meeting. There has been three regular board meetings since that time. And so under the current procedural rules, that time has passed.
I'm not asking to address the December 10th meeting. I'm asking if we can address the name of Kelseyville. People do not want the name Canockdye.
Well, one option for the board or for a board member would be to consult with staff because part of that would, part of the review and the process there would be to coordinate what, and also finalize what would be the recommended action that would come out of the proposed, of the proposed item that you had in mind. So that would be my suggestion to consult with staff moving forward. Obviously, it wouldn't be a part of the board's item for today.
No, no. I was wanting to put it back on.
Right.
So Supervisor Spatie?
And County Council basically said what I was going to say, that I think that Supervisor Owen should meet with staff to figure out what the options are rather than doing that right here, since right now we have a specific agenda item. But I will go ahead and make a brief comment. I'll make more later on. There's obviously confusion as to what this item is supposed to be. I'm not sure if people heard what the item was or if they actually read what the item was. But the majority of the public comments we received was basically December 10th type of public comments of whether they wanted to keep the name or change the name, not discussing the process in which BGN and Kagan follow. And so there was obviously some massive confusion because the majority of the public comments that we received were not related to the item on the agenda. It was related very specifically to the foundation of the issue that we're kind of discussing here. So I think it's unfortunate that there was that level of confusion more often than not.
Can I just ask a question real quick of what Lloyd's comments? So the board policy, Robert's Rules of Order, Miss Manners, whatever you want to bring up, is superseded by the Ralph M. Brown Act, correct? Counsel?
I only respond to questions from your board. If your board gives me permission to respond, then I will.
Appreciate that. Yeah, that's true.
And so you're saying?
The Brown Act supersedes all of these policies and procedures and all of that, these other recommendations and guidelines.
Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Brown Act gives authority to your board to create and establish your board's own policies and procedures when it comes to procedural matters to start. And that is what culminated in the Board of Supervisors' Rules of Procedures, General Protocol, and Committee's Policy.
All right.
Okay. But it does, still, the Brown Act supersedes any of those rules if they conflict. The Brown Act on Rule 27 allows for reconsideration of any item that's been voted on by the board. And in this instance, it would be appropriate for one of the board members who voted in the majority on that decision on December 10th to bring forward a motion for reconsideration. The only board member here would be Chairman Crandall on that. And that motion would be made, it would be put on the agenda next week to make the motion for reconsideration. Then it would be put on the following week or subsequent meeting to then allow for that thing, that item to be reconsidered. It can be done within 12 months of when that decision was made, not after the next meeting. It's within 12 months under that process. Otherwise, you have to wait the 12 months for any board member to then ask that it be put on for reconsideration. So that's the process that should be applied, not a board policy that was adopted arbitrarily for some other reason. But there is precedent already for this board to take up items for reconsideration. And I can name a few of them that if you need specific examples of precedent where the board has actually taken up items for reconsideration.
All right. So did you want to answer that, Lloyd?
Sure. Just very briefly. So Rule 9, and I'll try to be brief about this. Rule 9 of your Board, Boards, County of Lakes, Rules of Procedure, General Protocol, and Committee's Policy outlines the requirements for taking in, considering, a motion to reconsider a prior board action. So it has all those requirements there. I believe I've already referenced the requirement, the timeline requirement for that in which the deadline for bringing up such item has passed. And this particular rule here, along with the rest of your board's Rules of Procedures that were adopted in 2018, I can certainly contend that those are compliant with the Brown Act.
And so with what was stated about one of the majority bringing it back, the time has passed? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. So the deadline is at the next, under Rule 9, under the deadline to bring up such an item to reconsider a prior board action was at the next regularly scheduled meeting after the action, subsequent to the action. That would be the action itself referenced occurred on December 10. The next regularly scheduled meeting that occurred then was December 17, 2024.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, again, we get this debate all day long. There are consequences to violating the Brown Act. There are no consequences to violating or going against board policy. So the Brown Act is what I'm sticking to. And in addition to what I stated earlier, the member of the board that was in the majority can ask that it be reconsidered. However, I forgot to add that at the next board meeting, four fifths of the current board would then have to vote in favor of, in order to reconsider, vote to reconsider that. So that is an important part. It can't be just three, three to two. It has to be four fifths vote in order to reconsider that. But again, with all due respect, and I'm not, nobody's ever paid me for legal advice. So you get what you pay for here. But you're bound more by the Brown Act and the consequences related to that than you are by any board policy that may have been adopted arbitrarily or for whatever reason at any time.
All right. Noted. Sir?
My name is Vern Belanger. And Helen, you're saying that nobody knew about the name change until recently. At the very first meeting that Citizens for Healing gave over four years ago, we had two members of the Kelseyville Business Association that showed up.
Sir, we're going to discuss the letters at hand. We're not going to rehash the name change debate. So if you.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that as a motion was made concerning what's not true.
Okay.
I think there's confusion about the confusion. I was talking about how people think we're talking about the name change today, but we're talking about a drafted letter.
Okay.
So either we're not reading or we're not listening. Either way, we're not going anywhere if that's how we're going.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
There really is no confusion. My name's Rachel White of Kelseyville. I spoke with Jessica last week. They gave me this excuse. I never asked for the vote on Measure U to be revisited. I asked to bring this back to the board for a discussion because of all the reasons that the original application should have been rejected based on the existing policies. And your letter also includes false information. And your letter also includes false information. They do have a procedure for accepting other names. No other names are accepted because we don't want to change our name, period. And we now know that at the federal level, it's not going to change. So your letter speaks loud and clear. You do not care about Kelseyville. You don't care about our reputation. You don't care about what's happened to us over the years. You don't care about the businesses. You do not care about the brand. Kelseyville's burning, and you are fanning the flames. This is a disgrace, and it should embarrass you. And your lack of leadership throughout this process is completely unacceptable. If you don't want to stand up for Kelseyville, then get out of the way. Our name is not changing, and we want to move on. This letter is another step in the wrong direction, and if you can't figure out where we're going, we need new leadership.
Anyone else that would like to come up and give some public input?
I'm not sure why, why we have to, I mean, the county, be the ones to direct the BGN and Kagan to rewrite their policies or to even call them out. The policies that they have don't support the name change and the application that was sent in. As Supervisor Owen stated, there was no, they'll say there was public, there wasn't. There was nobody that reached out and talked to the KBA about name change. They bopped their heads into businesses and, you know, they'll tell you that they checked around, but they didn't. So why are, why are we responsible if, if the BGN's policies don't support this? Canuckti's not an acceptable name for Kelseyville. There was no input for that. It should just die. The, the application should just die at the BGN level because of lack of clarity or whatever. I mean, one could say that the lack of clarity at the BGN was, would be a way for this board to not support changing the name. We don't want it changed because your policies and procedures don't support it. You know, I, I think we're going to find that, you know, it's not going to get much better there. I, I think Kagan is dysfunctional. I think you'll find that. So I hope that, my hope would be that we could readdress this somehow or address the fact that Canuckti's not acceptable, and that should be the end of it. You know, there's been no discussion with anybody from Lake County or from Kelseyville. There was no discussions, you know, from the tribes early on. This, this wasn't the tribes. It was Citizens for Healing threw this thing out there, and the tribes picked it up and ran with it. But I think we could have done more to talk about maybe geographic features instead of, they don't have any guidelines for this, because nobody's done this. You know, change the name of a town of 10,000 people, changing our name. They haven't done it. You know, so I really hope we can get something done here, you know, the letter, you know. I get why you're doing it, but I don't know if it's going to help anything up there. It might. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I guess you'll just have to take my off-topic proposal for, for the letters. Pack a lies.
State your name for the record, please.
Alan Fletcher. Sorry, I said earlier, Alan Fletcher, Citizens for Healing, Lucerne resident. At our very, I was not on board, but longer can speak to it. At our first or second meeting, the cultural director of LM, the late Thomas, Thomas Leon, came and talked to us right from the start, not a random native of the street.
Alan, is this referring to the, the letters?
I am referring to the attacks that were just made and responding to attacks made by those people, which are lies, and I am preparing a response for the Kagan meeting on February 28th, which will itemize every step of the way, who we spoke to, when we spoke to them, what they told us, and a whole bunch of other stuff. Their history is bunk. They accuse us of using inflammatory language, and they call us a mob, and this, that, and the other. I will submit that to Kagan and copy you. Thank you. And if you want to call back and talk about my procedures that I proposed for the letter, you can call me back if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the, the letters right here, or the comments. Right. Anyone else would like to come up and speak about this item? Anybody on Zoom?
Nora.
Did you want to speak first or after? Okay, so if you want to unmute and state your name for the record, and we'll give you three minutes.
Hello, this is Fred Breones. I'm calling in from my home at Canuckti. Sorry I did not come to the meeting. I don't have $5 to spend on white supremacy, and that's what this is. And I want to make it a fact and let everyone know that, I want to tell them why the vote was non-binding. Because if it was binding, it would lead into the one biggest civil rights lawsuits ever.
Fred, we're discussing the, the letter.
And I, I know, I got three minutes here, and these people now need to realize that times are changing, and it's changing out of their favor. It's for the indigenous people and people of color, that we are the original homeowners of this land, and they're going to have to understand that whole educational piece now, that this is our home. And if they don't like it, they could leave. This is Indian land.
Fred.
Guys, where they're at.
Let's please stick to the letter. I understand, and I think we've hashed this out before. Let's.
It's important the name change. Leave it to Canuckti.
This isn't, this, this item, Fred, is not about that. It's about the recommendations to the Board of Geographical Names and Kagan for policies. Sir? All right, I'll, just in case someone else wants to speak, if not, I'll close public input, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I, I feel like we're continuing to stumble in this really important but difficult conversation that I think our personal process has not been good. And before we tell someone else what their process should be changed, I think we need to review our process as a whole. Not that I even want to have that conversation either, but before we point a finger at someone else, we should be pointing it at ourselves. Some people left this room on December 10th feeling like they got slapped in the face, and I can't speak for individuals, but saying the process is flawed is also a slap in the face of the 30% who voted to change the name and got that name changed. The process worked for the 30%. So I, I just feel like we just are making wrong decisions on how to process through these difficult matters, and that we need to look internally before we reach out externally. And so I don't think we should be sending a letter today. And I don't think that we should. I'm going to make a request. I think there's been a lot of staff time spent on this difficult subject, but I would like to ask for staff not to spend time on this. If a board member wants to bring something, they can do that on their own. But we have staff that are spending hours of time in meetings, in drafting letters, in drafting memos, and we have that capability to do that ourselves. I want to see staff spent on the priorities that we have, which is to, I know I'm going to get a laugh from somebody in the audience, to make our communities better, economic development, better opportunities, all of that good stuff that we should be focusing on. This is not on the list of things that we're asking staff to work on. So that is my ask.
I don't know who's first. Supervisor Owen?
Go ahead. I forgot to take it down.
Chair Rasmussen?
Yes, thank you. I do have a lot of concerns with sending a letter right now similar to what Supervisor Sabatier said. I think, you know, the public just seeing this draft letter last week, you know, on Thursday afternoon is not enough time. I think we ought to be engaging the community more as supervisors to work with everybody, get more input before we make decisions on this. I think that some of the, while I do think there are some issues with the, the federal policy, I also think that this board in 2024 could have taken a more active role in engaging the public, going out and facilitating meetings, and just working with everybody to try to work through this. I feel like it was just kind of out there, and we weren't involved until the board decided to put it to a vote, and then, again, it, we just weren't engaged. I don't feel we were engaged. I think that's critical. You know, I, I do think some of the federal policies are clear. What was clear to me is that, and this is, you know, why my, my previous comment, is that the Board of Names policy said that while they do accept public feedback, they don't rely on that as the primary source of their information, as I recall reading. They rely on the local governing body to figure out the best way to seek public input. That was my understanding of it. And, you know, the board did come up with a way to do that. Not, everyone is happy with, you know, the, the final outcome, but nonetheless, the board made the decision that that's how they were going to seek public input. So I think, you know, there's, there's more involvement we can have. I think if we're going to send a letter, it needs more discussion in the public, more feedback from the public. I personally don't think the federal government ought to be involved in changing the name of a populated place anywhere in the United States. I don't see that as their job. They're not here. They're not part of this community or any other. They're, the reason that they were created, in my opinion, was to, to regulate names of geographic places primarily on federal land. We have vast tracts of federal land. We're talking about geographic features. That's really what their mission ought to be. You know, if we were going to send any letters, I, I don't think they ought to be involved in, in any of these decisions. I think it needs to be resolved within a local community with, with engagement of all stakeholders on all sides, try to work through it. So those are my comments at, at this time.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I might add that the public comment or the public input was brought to us on a ballot. It was brought to the community, the entire Lake County, and it was the Board of Supervisors that asked to have that done. If that was to be ignored, it should, shouldn't have been put on the ballot in the first place. So I feel that that was our way of commenting, and when it came back to the board, it, we didn't, we weren't asked for comment before that. So that's my, my feeling.
Yeah, and this has been really hard. This has been really hard for everyone. This hasn't been done before, as Mark mentioned. You know, it's been really frustrating to get the engagement that was really needed. And in the beginning, the California Committee, Kagan, told Supervisor Sabatier and I that they were assigning staff, that they were going to come out and do that engagement, they were going to do listening sessions, they were going to explain the process thoroughly, they were going to do all of these things, and then we had, you know, a lot of questions to the BGN and the Kagan that we were not getting answers to. And we kept asking and pushing, and, and it finally became really clear that they were not going to show up and do those things that they said they were going to do, that we had asked them to do, that we needed them to do. And that's, that's when I, when I realized that was not going to happen, that's when I decided to bring the vote to the board, so that we could really find out how the community felt about this. Because my, this whole time, I've been really frustrated that the community wasn't more involved, and there weren't more ways to participate. But on the other side of this, they weren't answering our questions, and they weren't helping us with the material and the process that we needed to go out to the public. So if you say there should have been more community engagement, like, what does that even look like? Because I can't answer everybody's questions. It's, it's a federal process, and it's a state process. So that's what's really frustrating. So then we did the vote. We heard very clearly what the people wanted, and then the board voted a different direction. And here we are today. I did ask for that to be reconsidered, and I was told by County Council, it is not possible because of Rule 9. So this is what I felt like the very next thing that we could do, is share the frustration that I have had over this last year with the lack of participation and engagement from both of these committees. And I have had a lot of conversations with our state and federal electives to try and get more help around this, because it's just inadequate. It's been inadequate since the beginning, and that's where these letters come from. It's the frustration because this was just dumped in our lap with no supports, and, and it's taken a lot of time and energy, and we're not, you know, we, we knew from the beginning there was never going to be winners in this, and, and, and it has, it's been really destructive in this community. It's been really sad to see. So, yeah, so here we are. This executive order pretty much says the name is not going to change. The, the Trump administration is taking this direction. They are completely gutting the BGN. They are replacing all of the BGN board members. The staff is gone, and the policies need to be rewritten. And so here's our suggestion, if you're rewriting policies, here. But at the end of the day, nothing is going to happen. It's going to, if this committee ever reforms and is productive, it's going to take years to figure out any of this, and this file is never going to even get opened. So I don't really want to put any more time and resources into this, because it's been a year. We're all really tired.
Can I speak?
Yes.
A brief second.
You know, back when I was, I was campaigning, I actually, I don't know if I said this up here before, but I was invited to the very first ever Native American forum at Robinson, and it was really cool. I went, but the night before I did a lot of research, and the day before. So, because I knew this was going to be one of the questions, and I ended up finding a couple of different things. One of the things that I found out was that back in the 30s and 40s, the, they were calling, some of the trappers coming through the area were calling Kelsey Creek, Kelsey Creek. And that was before Andrew Kelsey came to this area. So I found that interesting, and actually, I've tried to find it again, and the only one I found, which I do have it here, was a George Kelsey that had, that they believed was named, that Kelsey Creek was named after. But, so there was more than one Kelsey family in the area, so that was one of the things that I found was, was interesting. Secondly, I got really excited, as I've talked to, I know some people about, about instead of upsetting and changing what's going on and going through all of this, couldn't we put together a culture center? And I think that would be phenomenal, and amazingly enough... And amazingly enough, on the December 10th, Mr. Rob Brown had brought up the same thing. He was right in front of me and had said it took, it was like he read my mind, but I'm sure he came up with it just as independently as I did. And I brought that to the natives at that time because your story's not being told. It's not really out there. When I travel, I've been to a number of these monuments and Crazy Horse and such, and it's something to be revered. And I think we're missing the boat on this. I think we can make something positive out of this, and I would absolutely love to see a native culture center here where you're telling your story, not just back 100, 150 years, but thousands of years for that matter, and it could be interactive. And the kids can learn from that and not, and on all, all walks of life, your story could be told. So that was something, and I've actually spoke with EJ about that, and it's told, I told him that's something I would absolutely love to work, work on.
And a memorial. We could do a memorial.
And so, so thank you for stating that. So there, yeah, there's a hand up in Zoom, so I'll allow, let's, one more, and then I'll allow the Zoom two. So if you, I'll open public input, one more. So if you want to come up.
So, I would stick with this item. I still, you know, I'm not convinced that my request can be denied the way it was. But the concern I have is that no action's going to be taken, which probably shouldn't. The thing that should have happened because of all the things that Jessica's talking about, that the last letter that they still have should, should just, should just, don't stop with it, just don't do anything with it until we've had a chance to review everything. But what I've heard, and this, as the discussion goes in this from, from Jessica, is it's BGN's fault, it's Trump's fault, it's, it's Kagan's fault, it's the board members that voted against the will of the, of the vote, it's their fault, it's county council's fault because they gave me Rule Nine. No accountability or, or admission that maybe there's a few things that you could have done way before this happened that would have kept all this from happening to get where we are right now. That's the one thing that's lacking is your admission that you should hold yourself accountable.
So if you're on Zoom, can you please unmute, state your name for the record and?
Nora.
She?
Nora.
Nora? You can unmute. All right, so Nora, we've tried twice now, so we're going to go ahead and close public input. If you can email or send something in to the clerk of the board, and we'll go ahead and put it on record and go from there. So as we close public input, I don't know if there's any more statements, but I'll just make a brief one. The, this, this item, in discussing it with Supervisor Piska and staff, was basically also addressing the executive order because as it's written, they're going to replace the folks that are on that committee and then recreate policies, reform those policies. And so that was, I think, was the thought, was to give some insight as to what's been done here, as it was one of the first type of situations with a populated town and whatnot. Other names and situations were SQ names and rocks and, you know, mountains and things like that. And so this was giving them the idea and the, and the experience we had as it basically put us in a position as a county to have separate and divisive and difficult time while discussing this and getting through it. And so for me, I know, for me, I wanted to make sure we, in essence, paid it forward so no one else had to go through this again. Because in my mind, this, I mean, is, I think we all know the way that I voted, however, knowing how this goes now, it more than likely isn't going to happen with the diminishing of the department. So with that, that whole situation, after all of what we went through, is almost, is a moot point. So for me, that's, that's what this letter was to me, was to give them some insight and say, hey, to ensure another community doesn't get broken apart by this type of vote, or whatever the case may be, discussion, here is some insight and we would like to pay that forward. And in knowing too, that we're not really even going to have this progress. So that was, that was my, my mindset with discussing this. Also, it was never a vote to change it. And I think one of the first statements I ever made when it comes to that was, if there was at this board level, it would always be a tug of war back and forth. It would just always be that way. And that's why, you know, when people approached me about, I never wanted to bring it here. And I don't think anyone wanted to because it just would have always been that way, no matter what. And then the BGN application came and then all the other stuff. So even when I was approached about it by different groups, it was the same. It was like, look, do, do something else because it's just going to keep going back and forth one time or another. And so with all of that, that was my goal, was to give some insight to crafting the policies and whatnot and going from there. So, so that, that was the intent, you know, and I, I understand that, and when I talked with, with Rob, I mentioned, I understand this isn't exactly what you wanted. I defer to the district supervisor. And as you were saying, you spoke with county council and staff and was advised that that's not something we can revisit or reconsider. So, so yeah, I just wanted to highlight that and state that for everyone to know. Where, you know, I didn't want to not say nothing, you know, and sit here. So yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'll state, and I don't know where we'll go from here, but yeah. There's not any other comments. So Lloyd? It looked like you wanted to say something, that's all. All right, sorry. I, I closed public input, I mean.
I have one question. If it's not addressed at the federal level and the letter is still there, excuse me, after a certain time period, will, could they bring it back up, a change of regime, a new president? Could that come back up and our letter is still in there asking to have it changed to Canuckdie? Or will it drop off and go away? That's my question.
From, from what I read, they're going to also look at all of the submissions and consider if they're even going to be addressed, the new appointed group. That's my interpretation of what I read, but I, you know, I'm not, I'm not at that level of.
So we could then write letters as what we, the public could go ahead and put letters in?
The public could definitely send their letters in. Supervisor Sabatier?
And I would say that includes Board of Supervisors who have letterheads that they, if they wanted to, write individual letters, have the right to do so because they could do so anytime for anything, as long as they don't represent the board in those letters.
Perfect.
Would that be, that would, just want to make sure we hammer that in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to Supervisor Owen's question, so in terms of the, whatever letters that correspond is that, whether it come from the county, members of the public going to BGN, in terms of what BGN does, whether, or what their retention is, that would, I'd probably have to defer to BGN's own policies and procedures on how long they would retain such, such documents.
Thank you.
And just for further clarification, because I did mention that the board does have the authority to enforce rules and regulations necessary for the government of the board. That's under the Government Code actually, 25003, which is separate from statutory Brown Act provisions, but it is within the government code, just for clarification of what I said previously.
Thank you. So with that, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the letters, A, to the United States Board on Geographic Names, BGN Domestic Names Committee, and B, the California Advisory Committee on Geographic Names, Kagan, recommending changes to BGN's policies or principles, policies and practices in light of the January 20th, 2025 Presidential Executive Order, restoring names that honor American greatness and authorize the chair to sign.
Do I have a second? My motion dies. So with that, we'll go ahead and close this item with no action taken from motion, you know, not passed, motion moving forward. So, all right, we'll go ahead and close this item and move on to the, I think it was the, we have to go back to the other one, so. All right, you guys want to take a quick break or?
Sure.
Let's take a quick break. Let's come back at 2:15.
We're going to open back up. So Supervisor Owen, we're going to go ahead and move forward here. That's all right. All right. So we had a 9:05 earlier, but we moved it to this timeframe. And we're going to go ahead and go back to 6.3 Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of February 2025 Black History Month and Celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Birthday. And Supervisor Sabatier is going to read this proclamation.
And I'm joined with Rick Mayo, the President of the NAACP Chapter here in Lake County. Proclamation Designating the Month of February 2025 Black History Month and Celebrating Martin Luther King Jr.'s Birthday. Whereas the Lake County Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, will celebrate a combination of Black History Month and Martin Luther King Jr.'s Birthday as we reflect on the proud legacy of courage and dedication from visionary leaders like Martin Luther King Jr., Roy Wilkins, Rosa Parks, Kentaji B. Jackson, local community leaders like Sarah Wright, Sarah Anzano, Kenneth Bagsby Sr., Greta Ze, I believe is what it is, sorry, Basib Bell, and Lynette Kirkwood. And whereas the NAACP has been at the forefront of efforts to protect our democracy from assault, voting rights of people of color, refusal to enforce the Americans with Disabilities Act, LGBTQ discrimination, a woman's right to choose, workplace prejudice and hostility, voter suppression, gerrymandering, and urging the passing of the John Lewis Voters' Rights Advancement Act, which will ensure the protection of civil and voting rights under the United States Constitution. And whereas the NAACP history is one of dedication and struggle to maintain equality and justice for all citizens of the United States. And whereas the local branch, like other NAACP branches throughout the state and country, diligently works on social programs aimed at the elimination of banning books, rewriting of our vast contributions to this great nation, eliminating racial hatred, bigotry, and poverty. And whereas the Lake County Branch of the NAACP is led by Rick Mayo, President and 1982 Founder of the Lake County Branch. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate February 2025 Black History Month and a celebration of Martin Luther King Jr.'s Birthday. And the Lake County Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is commended on the vital role it has played in improving the quality of life in our local community. Further, on this occasion, we extend the branch our best wishes and continued success, passed and adopted this fourth day of February 2025 and signed by our Board Chair, E.J. Crandall.
First of all, I'd like to give honor to God. And I'd like to thank the Board for their continued support of and dedication to the community and the African-American community and people of color in Lake County, as you have continued to do for many, many years. It's always a pleasure to come and receive one of these because it makes a statement to the whole county. Hopefully it's on YouTube, so it'll be the whole world, you understand? That the County of Lake, you understand, is a county of immigrants. We all came here from someplace. And you all are looking at all of us, you understand, independently of the other for our strengths. And you always are reaching out to give us a hand up. And that, that's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
I want to say a little something and pass it on to, and Rick, we're going to take pictures, so don't go too far. And then pass it on to Board members in case they want to make comments. In the late 1800s and the early 1900s, there are two individuals, one that's very much related to the NAACP, and in my heart of hearts are some of the most important people in the United States' history. And one of them is Booker T. Washington, who believed that education would lead to equality. And the other one was W.E.B. DuBois and his crew of lawyers, who believed that the law would bring equity and equality to everyone. I think that Black History Month is a time to learn and a time to be open and listen. And if you have the time, please look up those two individuals. They're very inspiring to the things that have happened here in this country and continue to happen in this country.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board? Go ahead. Last chair.
Yes, I want to thank Rick for not only his work with the NAACP, but he's also been a huge part of our community and very active in a lot of community efforts over the past 30, 40 years that I can recall. I know Rick going back to the early 1990s. And he's always been very caring in our community. So thank you. Appreciate it.
I haven't known Rick that long, but I met him during campaigning this last year. And he has just welcomed me in and let me take part, welcomed me in to do part of a toy drive for the, from the veterans. And we've had a really good time. And thank you, Rick, for accepting me into your life.
Thank you. So I, I'll go ahead.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you for joining us. You know, we, bringing this forward is a promise to ourselves in a show of public support, how deeply we care about the diversity in our community and our commitment to our constituents. So I always appreciate seeing you. Thank you for coming in again. And thank you for being here to accept this for us.
So, so thank you, Rick, for coming. And Supervisor Sabatier, thank you for reading the proclamation.
Yes.
I am, I'm really happy that we're conducting this proclamation. I have family and friends that, you know, and I hate to be the one to say this, but that are worried right now with the national events happening. And I won't belabor that, but I just know that I have family members that are upset, they're hurt, whether they're hurt or angry, that their grandparents, parents have put in a lot of time and effort to, you know, to march, to fight for equal rights and feel as if the stroke of a pen has taken all of that arduous work away. And so I'm glad we're moving forward here to recognize that. And it just, it pains me as a veteran to know that people feel that way still. So I just, I have to say it. And so, but I, again, Rick, thank you for representing NAACP and continuing that as well. And for coming and being a part of this proclamation. Thank you. Is there, is there anyone that would like to comment?
That is Nora.
Nora? You can unmute? All right. Sorry, Nora. We're trying, but if you could provide an email or a comment, e-comment, we'll make sure it's on record. Is there anyone else? With that, we'll bring it back to the Board and we'll move forward with some pictures. All right. So, we'll get back to the agenda. And it looks like we have calendars, non-tammed items, and so we're, who wants to start? Supervisor Sabatier is ready to start.
I said I was, and yes. So, I have a leadership meeting for NACO with the Health Steering Committee tomorrow. We're kinda just reviewing what's happening at the federal government. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I know that we're paying attention to what's being proposed and preparing all of our communities and what may or may not occur. Just to let everybody know, I contact our Human Services Department and our PHO and let them know, here are things that I just learned today, so at least they can take it with what they need to do. Blue Zones meeting later on, and Lake County Continuum of Care meeting for, the specifics of it is the Hub Advisory Group. Really appreciate Adventist Health taking care of that to help connect people once they're in our HMIS system. Starting off on Thursday with Judges Breakfast, meeting with a, some PG&E folks. I also have a meeting with USDA, but I think I'm gonna try to move that as PG&E is a kind of an important conversation to have. Have some more NACO stuff going on on Thursday, Blue Zones. The general meeting for the COC will happen, and then I'll finish that day with the City Council meeting. Finally, after months and months of trying to trap me, I am meeting with Supervisor Gore from Sonoma County to discuss his Senate run, and then meeting with our Public Defender Behavioral Health and Social Services Director for our last meeting, just to discuss how the COC can work with our Public Defender's Office. On Saturday night at 7:30, I will be here at the Memorial for Vicente and look forward to seeing all of his friends gathered together and hear the stories. Meeting with a group from Kelseyville, from the Baptist Church, to discuss some COC stuff. They've already reached out in the past. I think they might be ready for some activities. And we've been working on building that trust and happy that they reached out to see what was possible with the COC. Meeting with our CAO, another COC meeting with our Interfaith Committee, and then back here on Tuesday for our Board meeting.
Supervisor Owen?
Meetings, meetings, meetings. I have a, I have several meetings. I have several meetings on my calendar. Most of them are with constituents. One of them is Gwinoc Ranch, that's tomorrow, which is the Maha Lotus Land Project. I'll be meeting with them tomorrow. I also need to do some staff meetings. I'm getting those lined up right now to get up to par on some of the technology that we have here. And I'm also working on a few projects. One of them, I think I'm trying to look into, is the bass, trying to bring the ESPN bass fishing back. I don't know if that's possible, so I really didn't even wanna say that right now. But I've got calls in, trying to see if we can do something along those lines. Trying to get ahold of Cal Fire to meet with them too on, with Clark, trying to hook them up with Clark. So, I do have a number of things on my agenda. Thank you.
So, is APC, I hadn't, I thought it was the first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, we apologize. We didn't lie. It's just not always right. Sometimes we do it the second week, depending on holidays. And so, for this upcoming week, it is the 12th.
Okay, and that's at nine?
What I'll do-
Someone send me an invite, please.
I will do the same thing, and I apologize. I did, I just did this for Brad because of his request. I'll send an email to Lisa Davy Bates to make sure that you're on the list of the emails, so nothing is missed. And I'll ask for her to send out a calendar for the year. That way, you can get that set up in your calendar.
Okay, so that clears out my morning tomorrow. I have my biomass cohort meeting with the Shasta Valley North Coast, which is two and a half hours in the afternoon. And then, we're working on our Geiser, Geiser Ad hoc meeting. You're coming to that, right? Okay, good. Yeah, I've got that. And then Friday, I am playing catch-up. Monday, I got my CAO meeting, and then I have a check-in. Oh, that's the wrong day. Never mind. I think that's it.
Last chair, Rasmussen?
Yeah, I got a fair number of things, since we haven't had a regular meeting since the 14th, I believe. Went to LAFCO meeting, EMCC meeting.
Oh, yeah. You need your mic.
Oh, sorry. LAFCO meeting, EMCC meetings that I did in the last couple of weeks. Several pit committee meetings and training, and then we did the pit count, I guess, the week before last. Attended Martin Luther King Day in Clear Lake during the holiday. Met with the Chamber Director. Supervisor Pisca and I did some follow-up work with the Big Valley Committee. And we did recruit some more applicants. One was appointed today. There'll be another one on the agenda on the 11th. Should be, and that should fill us up. I did my tour and meeting with the librarian, First Five Commission meeting, Scotts Valley Community meeting, which I'll announce. They did vote to start broadcasting and recording their meetings, which they had been the only MAC that weren't up until now. So, that's gonna be available online in the future, starting in March. I met with both, staff from both hospitals recently on community things they have going on in my district. I will be at the Memorial for Vicenti as well on Saturday here in Lakeport. And I do intend to be at the COC meeting this week on Thursday. And that should wrap it up for now. Thank you.
Does that leave me? All right. So, tomorrow, I have Golden State Natural Resources, East Region Town Hall at the Moose Lodge in Clear Lake Oaks, and then CSA Number Two over in Spring Valley. I think there's a meeting on Thursday with staff and, yeah, I think it's, staff and, are you on that one, Supervisor Sabatier, for Thursday? The, I think it's like a discussion about the PG&E?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the one I need to move something.
All right. Saturday, what time is the candlelight vigil at seven?
7:30 PM at Library Park.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, I have a booster at six, so I don't know. Maybe I can shoot over, but I, yeah. But we'll see. I know that you two are going. It's well represented. And so, there's also a SURF meeting, Central Region Town Hall on Monday, the 10th. I'll be joining via Zoom. I will be going to DC for National Congress of American Indians. And so, I'll be over in DC for next week. Also talking to folks about some things I could possibly bring over to advocate here as well. So, I have a couple of people already reaching out to me and giving me information to, like we talked about, at Middle Creek Restoration, stop by some offices, maybe some committees, or whatever the case may be. I know that some people aren't appointed, committees aren't formed. But at the same time, I wanted to get out there on another, with another group with my tribe. So, yeah, I'll be there, and then I'll be back for the next meeting on the 18th. So, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and read off the closed session. What's that? Did you have?
No meeting on the 18th.
Oh, there isn't? That's right. So, it's not till, sorry.
We'll see you the 25th.
We'll see you all the 25th. All right. So, here we go. With closed session items, we have 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation Agricultural Commissioner, 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation Special District Administrator, and 8.3, Public Employee Evaluation Water Resources Director, and 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, D2, E1, One Potential Case. With that, we'll go to closed session, and thank you for joining in with us. And when we come out, I'm pretty sure we'll be announcing it internally. All right.